To order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Glad we all survived the storm last night.
It was something bad.
It was, uh, it was interesting. Uh, bill's payable. I will entertain a motion.
Can we want to do roll call first?
Sure, roll call first.
Mark Burchard?
Here.
Details.
Maureen Bory?
Here.
Joanne Shirkey?
Here.
Artie Bryson?
I'm here.
Kristy Hilton?
Ebsen excused.
Crystal Regan?
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here.
Yeah, we all knew that. Okay, bill's payable. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve bill's payable in the amount of ninety-four thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and seventeen cents.
All right, I have motion and support. Any discussion?
Will we continue to pay, uh, Giffles and Webster?
No.
No, we're all done.
Okay.
Yep.
This is just cleaning things up?
Yep, final, final.
Okay.
Yep. All right, anything else? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes? Mark Burchard?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have the supervisor's report. Bear with me. I'll warn you right now. The two caros culverts was replaced on Phelps Road and, um, the first half has been repaved if you haven't seen it. You did a good job. First, we did a chip seal to get the base done, the foundation done, and then the asphalt overlay. There is, I think, a little bit of shoulder work that needs to be done on it still, then it will be done, done. I've been talking to, uh, the county road commission and they have funding set. Right now, they're doing their funding for next year's projects and they, uh, they have the funding set aside to repave Anchor Bay Drive where all the flooding damage was and everything, so we're looking to get that repaved next year. And also, the last bridge right before Deckers will be replaced.
That'll be the last one, Marty?
Yeah, yep. So, uh, I'm gonna have some talks. I know we're always looking for more places to put in drainage. Problem is, they don't have the easements and the rate to do it and unless people are willing to give up, you know, some easements, uh, that's the big problem on that, on that road, but do the best we can. Good news, our federal earmark for our million dollars that we're gonna put towards, uh, our sewer interceptor project is made out of committee. So, that's a really good sign and all's, I'm told, you know, it will get rubber stamped and pressed through, but we'll see, fingers crossed. And, uh, at the state level, the, um, line item has fifty thousand dollars on the state budget for HIDA funding is still there and holding through the whole state budget process. That's good, too. Been dealing with a lot of building blight issues. Uh, we do have some court actions coming up here this week and next week. Some are on Zoom, some are in person. We actually had one on Zoom today that just got postponed to the thirtieth, so we can do it in person. The new fire, I'm sure George won't talk about, but the new fire trucks are being outfitted and a new airboat has been delivered and I think rumor has it, we're getting the radio installed on that tomorrow. And the tanker that we sold, uh, was picked up today, so that went away. Uh, let's see. Skip that one, that one didn't happen. Uh, we're negotiating, uh, uh, agreement with, um, MAFF, the firefighters' union and, uh, I, we may be in an impasse, I'm not sure yet, so if that happens, we go to mediation. We have, we're in the midst of our SWIPI permit. Our, uh, oh, this is nothing but a money grab, but we, we have like five catch basins and we actually have set aside Wednesday all day, John, myself, our engineer, and two people from the state to talk about our five catch basins. They're gonna be here from nine to four doing our audit, so. I don't know what to say.
Interesting.
It's, uh, I, uh, whatever. I could go on that forever. Uh, okay. Do that. Um, oh, yeah. Let's take a look at this. I left it on. This is, we had, we, we did our wetland study on our Harson's Island nature park over on the island. And, um, it, it came out, came back pretty decent and I wanna just go over it. The blue area is all frags and they definitely, I'm gonna put this on the wall and on the website and everything. They definitely want us to treat and cut these, which we will have, have done. I think I might even get that pro bono done. The, um, green area is forest wetlands and, uh, we can do the walking trail and put stuff on, on that part, um, with no issues at all. The tan area is called a shrub wetland and, uh, that's limited things what we can do on it, on it. And the brown is sludge wet metal lands is called and they really don't want us in that area at all. And where it is, it's surreal, like, you know, we're okay here, we take one foot, we're in that area. But, uh, the, the person that did it was really impressed of, about all the, um, wildlife and nature and, you know, the, all the bugs and and turtles and, and, and flowers and, and wheat and plant growth in there. There, there's all this milkweed. I mean, I look out, I see weeds. I, um, I'll be honest with you. I see weeds. I don't know, but they're saying, oh, this is, you know, milkweed and this is this and that and they'll, they'll be willing to, uh, come back and identify a lot of that stuff, so it'd be cool to label it along our, our path.
Yeah.
So, the path is, is gonna be a soft path, uh, or some areas, we're just gonna cut it, like where it goes over the brown for a small part of it and the, and, uh, other parts, we'll, we'll be able to wood chip it. Something that was pretty cool, our, uh, our observation tower, we renamed it a birding platform because, uh, I was actually reviewing this and a grant opportunity came available for a birding platform.
Good thinking. Good thinking.
And, uh,
Yes, it is.
I mean, I mean, the same hour and, uh, they, the, it's called Coastal Management. Uh, part of the Autobahn Society, they're going, they're, they're going to pay for engineering and help pay for the construction of a birding platform, one in St. Clair County. And I was working with the people in the county and I, I challenged them to find a better spot in the whole county than here to put it and now they're, they're, they totally agreed, so. Macomb County's gonna get one, St. Clair County's gonna get one and I'm gonna work hard to make that one right there. So, uh, we'll be working on that. I thought that was kinda, kinda ironic, so. I just wanted to go over this with you and this is where we're at. Right now, I have appointment, we gotta, uh, go over the, the details with the DEQ or Eagle as far as how, how we're gonna engineer the dock and, and everything, but it all looks good. Unfortunately, we won't be able to do the archery range in this tan area. Um, they just won't allow that, so. I did wanna put a archery range in there, but that won't happen here, so. But it was interesting and new news and, uh, we'll be moving forward on that in, uh, weeks to come. Like, next step would be Eagle, then, uh, you know, really, we can start putting things out to bid for the parking lot and, uh, uh, the culvert and, um, work our way to the docks and, and everything else, so. Good news on that. The Pearl Beach fishing sign, uh, fishing pier sign, which I thought would've been up by now, like everybody else are having problems, but it's promised before July fourth, it will be up. And I'm working with the DDA, we have a meeting tomorrow night on, uh, the rest of the, um, the area as far as the site plan, the bathroom, uh, fence and the long-term plan. So, uh, we're gonna have a discussion, possibly moving the bathroom closer to the pier on the north side of the lot and, uh, but we gotta come up with a plan and then I wanna ship it over to the planning commission for a, a review. No Limits Fishing Charter is gonna start there, uh, starting soon. I don't know if you've seen, but they've been getting a lot of press on their free charters for disabled people. Free fishing charter is gonna run off the pier. The name of their boat is, uh, Barrier Buster. I think that's way cool. And, uh, um, it's, uh, it's going well. Uh, they're, they're pretty excited for it. Flamingo Bridge Project are still being delayed from the problem with materials, getting the right kind of wood to finish the job and, uh, so we still don't have a solid date on delivery. I'm working with Comcast still on, uh, on the quote, on the expanding, uh, to the back roads on, um, Wi-Fi, or not Wi-Fi, but broadband. I don't know if you saw, saw it or not, but the bike path is now done. The, uh, the pavement was done, it came out great and, uh, I got a couple groups possibly looking at, uh, helping us re, redo the benches there. I, I think the, the, the frames are okay, but redoing the wood or put some, uh, something else on them. Okay, met with the Sturgis for Tomorrow group. They are, cause, you know, they were canceled last year with COVID. Uh, they're, they're doing the Sturgeon Festival and, um, and the tournament. Uh, we're splitting it up this year. They're gonna be doing the actual fishing tournaments September seventeenth and eighteenth out of the pier and they'll, they'll be using the park, too, for weighing and, and, uh, they won't be using much of it there, just a couple little small tents. But then the following weekend, the, uh, September twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh, they're going to have the festival. We're gonna do a beer tent, try to raise some money for them. They're gonna bring in the tanks for Sturgeon, so people can see it and, uh, they'll have, uh, some other activities going, uh, that Saturday and Sunday. You know, it's a cool thing, you know, this is the only Sturgeon tournament in the country that, that's done.
The country?
In the country.
Yeah.
They have, places have seasons where it's open, like Black Lake, where it's open for two hours till they catch five fish.
Yep.
But there's, there's, this is the only tournament in the whole country, so. Uh, the park concession is open now, uh, during the week, five days a week, so support them. They've been doing okay. I'm, I'm, uh, hoping to eat lunch there Wednesday.
What are their hours?
Uh, noon to six.
Okay.
Is it noon to six? Yeah, noon to six. And music in the park, uh, and a lot of outside events are scheduled and going good. Jobbing Noon, our famous unsanctioned event, is coming up this Friday and so is the Antique Boat Show this, uh, weekend, too. And Lock Cabin Days is Sunday, June twenty-seventh, right out here. The lock, the cabin here outside our, our hall is the oldest structure in Clay Township and, uh,
When is that, this Sunday?
Uh, the twenty-seventh, yes. And, uh, dates on the calendar are closer than they appear. They, um, it's from one to four and they, they have some, uh, music and entertainment. They'll have a big quilting show in here, in this, uh, in the hall here and they have the best strawberry shortcake I've ever had there you can get. So, just saying, I'll, I'll be partaking, so. That's my,
How old is that, uh, how old is that cabin?
I, you know, I, I can't, I don't know.
That's fair, all right.
But it, it, it's in the eighteen,
Eighteen hundreds?
Oh, yeah.
Something?
Eighteen hundreds. And, and it's funny, whenever they work, they're working on it, I, I was asking, you know, you got a building permit for this, you know? And I actually found an old building permit, it's actual cardboard from the forties, the Clay Township. So, I walked it over there, I goes, here's your permit, you know? So, it's kinda fun, but, uh, you know, and one thing I, we gotta start thinking about this next May is Clay Township turns two hundred years old.
Wow.
So, we, uh, we should, I think we need to celebrate that in a couple different ways and, uh, I think we, I'll, uh, I'm not sure if they realize it or, and, uh, the museum on Harson's Island, too, but I'll contact them and see if they have any, any ideas, but, uh, there, there was a bit of debate. We became a township here in eighteen twenty-two, but it was named Plainfield Township and it actually encompassed IRA, it, it was like five or six townships together and the problem was in, uh, there was about four or five Plainfield Townships in the state at the time. So, they say, yeah, you gotta change your name. So, in twenty-eight, it was, it was changed to Clay Township. But, uh, I still say, you know, we became a township in eighteen twenty-two, so we'll be two hundred years old coming up, so.
Party time.
That's right. I'm gonna do a clay stock.
Seems like that should be, uh, that should be fun to put together.
Yes.
We should acknowledge that.
Yes.
In a big way.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm trying to think of the things we could do, you know, we, we have the July fourth. We don't, but the Lions do the parade, maybe we can do some kind of special float in there or something. Uh, I'm just, you know, think about it.
Clay bicentennial.
Yeah, um, but I, it's something that needs to, needs to get celebrated, be celebrated, so. All right, it's my supervisor's report. I told you it was gonna take a little bit, but we got through it. We're okay. All right, uh, public comments. Do we have any public comments? Come on up and, if you would, and give, give us your name and address and have at it.
All right. Uh, my name is Rose McComb. It's nine eight oh nine Willow Court. And I got a couple of problems, actually. We went to the, to the city about our neighbor putting a fence up and I just want some advice on what we need to do. Well, when he was starting to put it up, we said, you're on our property and he said, I don't, he didn't care, whatever. Okay, so I went, I went to the building area and they said, well, they would have, an inspector would be coming out and they would, you know, but let me, let me tell you this, that years ago, our garage was not in the, the right place. We had to move it. They rezoned, you know, Clay Township did it, so, you know, I've got paperwork with where the property is and all this and that. Anyway, when the inspector came, he wouldn't allow them on the property. He,
The neighbor wouldn't?
Nope. So, because he knows he's on our property.
Okay.
But now there's some, when I talked to, I forget who I talked to and I'm sorry for that, at the,
It's okay.
At the building, but they said, it looks like maybe we're gonna have to make it a civil matter now, maybe. But I, I, I mean, then we're gonna have,
Well, they, they said that usually if, with a fence issue, as a border issue, then we'll ask you, do you have a survey? A stake survey? And it's really between, you know, the, the, the two adjoining parties.
Yeah.
Um, for, for fence issues.
Yeah.
But, uh, we can definitely see if, if, if there was a permit for the fence.
There was.
Okay, there was, okay.
I know that. He got the permit. But, you know, we had told, we had said prior to him getting, I couldn't understand, why would you give the guy a permit when we already told you he's on our property and he put this terrible fence? It's, it's not even right.
You're, you're, is, uh, as you're going down towards the water, is it on the right side?
It would be,
The fence?
Left and we're right across the street from the, um, marsh where you can put your boat in there.
Yep.
Right there. It was a sign, you know, the welcome,
Oh, yeah.
That's our street, down that sign.
Right, yeah, yeah, okay.
So, this, and, and let's make matters worse if I don't keep on. This guy, the house is a grow house, too, and I wanna ask about that. I thought you're not supposed to have a grow house in a neighborhood.
Well, you, you can, under certain restrictions.
It smells, um,
Well, you're not supposed to be able to smell it.
I mean, he's put water, he's ruining our house. I mean,
Yeah.
He had hoses and pipes and, oh, it's just a problem.
Can you do me a favor?
Yeah.
Write your name and phone number on here and I'll give you all tomorrow.
All right, let's do that and we can discuss further, but
Yeah.
I wish there was something we could do with this fence. I mean, we had the property, when they, we moved the, the garage, they staked it all out. He took our stakes out. And so now we're gonna have to pay to get it. It's just a mess. I don't, but,
Sounds like it.
But don't you think there's really nothing we can do?
Well, I don't know. I'll, I'll check it out for you.
With that fence?
Yep.
What was that address again?
It's nine eight oh nine Willow Court and the guy next door is nine eight two five and his name is Tony Minkle. He's an idiot. The biggest idiot. He's a troublemaker.
Now, is that property towards the canal side or is it on the other side of the canal?
It's, um,
Towards the water.
Yeah, we're on, not on the canal side, you know, the other, yeah. And let me give you this, two seven eight eight. And, and that is my number, yeah.
All right, sounds good.
And we will talk further.
Yep.
Okay.
Very good.
Great, thank you. Thank you for listening.
Yep, no problem.
Great. There's nothing else we can do about it.
All right, any more public comments? Hearing none. Uh, let's go on to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of June seventh, twenty twenty-one, the June payroll report, the board approved check report from June seventh and the check report for in-between meetings since June seventh.
Support.
Motion in support. Any discussion, any problems? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Fire chief report. I will say, chief, they've been, they've been busy.
Yes. Good evening. Uh, fire chiefs report for May two thousand twenty-one. Uh, during the month of May, I attended two meetings, the homeowners' association on the island and the St. Clair County Chiefs Association. General business was discussed. Uh, May was a very busy month for us, as you know. I took a ride over to Allendale where West Shore is located to inspect our new engines and everything checked out all right. Training for those trucks was scheduled for the fourth of June, which we've had already. They've came over and there was eight of us that took the class and then we will teach or instruct the, uh, the firefighters on, uh, the operation of the vehicle and the do's and the don'ts on it. So, we're working on that. Uh, I attended a grand opening for the Harson's Island, um, Historical Society, uh, new addition and it was a very nice event. Did a nice job on the addition. I also attended a going-away event for George Crown, who designed our patch. Did a nice job on that. We're very proud of our patch and we're gonna miss him dearly. Fireboat two is in service. Uh, we put it in the water, it's in service, ready to go and the new airboat's done. We, uh, we're gonna go down and pick it up, but talking with Artie and Cindy, we decided to have it delivered. Was a lot easier to have it delivered than for us to go down and pick it up. So, I appreciate that very much. Thank you. And it's being housed at, uh, Rose Marine and their building, uh, on the dike. Hopefully tomorrow, uh, we'll have our new radio installed and our headsets and then we'll be starting training on that after, uh, the fourth of July. And then we'll put the other one up for sale.
Okay, any questions for George?
Sure. Mentioned, uh, they came and got the, um, the, the one truck today, the old, uh,
Yeah, we sold the, um, we sold the old tanker that was located on the island. The new truck will have eighteen hundred gallons on it, so that'll replace that truck. So, uh, the, the gentleman came and picked that up. Uh, we also have some other equipment that we, uh, removed off of one of the engines that we, um, scrapped and he's looking at the seats, he'll be coming back, picking those up. And then, uh, we have some, uh, five-inch hose that we're gonna sell and then some other equipment that he's looking at, so. Once I get, uh, the price on it, I will bring it to you folks for your approval.
Got some more stuff we're gonna part out.
Awesome, let's get rid of it.
Yep.
Yep, sell it.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Even if we gotta take a lump on it, whatever, it's,
No, we're not taking any lumps.
No, we're doing pretty good.
Part it out.
Yep.
Make more now than you will in two years, that's for sure.
Yep.
Good for you, chief.
Thank you.
Good action going.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, chief. Uh, unfinished business, new business. We need to set a public hearing for our police, fire, garbage mills.
Board, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for the police, fire, and garbage mills for August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, Clay Township Meeting Hall.
What time?
Seven to, Six, six o'clock.
Yep. Six o'clock.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any discussion on that?
Are we gonna set up any meetings on the island?
Yeah, we're gonna, yes, we are. Um, in fact, uh,
We got one coming, don't we?
No, no, since they just, well, tomorrow, our, our restrictions are,
Lifted.
Are lifted, so, in fact, Cindy and I, we talked about it today, we didn't wanna, uh, amend this meeting, but our next meeting, well, we're gonna set up, you know, a couple, three dates
Okay.
Over there for the rest of the year.
During the summer sometime, maybe, so?
Yeah, summer and fall.
So, some of the people who go away can be there?
Yep.
Okay.
So.
Great.
All right, so, uh, anything on the public hearing? Hearing none. All in favor of the public hearings, August sixteenth, Township Hall, six P M. Signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have fireworks, uh, permit for thirty-two thirty South Channel Drive at nine fifty-five, July third. Backup date, July fourth. And this is, this guy's been doing it there for five years. And, um, can we do, can we combine both of these?
Sure, board, I'll make a motion that we approve
Yes, thank you.
Both of our fireworks requests at thirty-two thirty, South Channel Drive, nine fifty-five P M on July third with a backup date, July fourth. And the Algonack Baptist Church fireworks display on Monday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, at eighty-five forty-three Marsh Road. Do we support them?
Give support.
Okay, we have motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, next we have resolution. Alright, next we have resolution twenty twenty-one fourteen B.
I'll make a. I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one fourteen B, setting the annual FOIA stipend to two thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents annually.
This is correcting the, a resolution that we had, that we, uh, we, uh, approved, so.
So Maureen, we all kinda chuckled, because last year I, we passed this resolution, and somehow the numbers were wrong. So when I went to put it in payroll, um, Cindy Babish, who was our FOIA coordinator, got a pay cut. And I'm like, uh-oh, we had one of the numbers wrong. So we re-passed the resolution last year, and then when I redo the resolutions this year, I pull up the resolution, I add three percent, or two percent, depending on.
Wrong number.
Well, I pulled the first resolution and not the second, so that's why everybody's kinda chuckling, because this is a rerun, but.
Okay, yeah.
Third time's a charm, so next year we'll, we'll have a good, so.
Okay, good, okay, I support.
Alright, we have motion and support, and, uh, uh, any more discussion? Roll call.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Crystal Reagan. Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Richard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have, oh, well, yeah, next we have is our, uh, D T E light conversion from, uh, uh, whatever we have, we have a plethora of types of lights, all converting to L E D. Um, but I do wanna point out, we've been trying to get a, a streetlight at Island and M twenty-nine for years.
Since two thousand fifteen.
Yeah.
Six years.
And, uh, it got put, oh, oh boy, it, it got put up this last weekend, or last week. But the funny thing is, next to the restaurant, they, they, they put a, a pole there two years ago, that was supposed to put the light on. And they didn't use it for the light, so there's a Edison pole there with nothing on it in front of the restaurant.
Oh, my.
So, hey, but we got, we got our light.
We have two, not one.
Um, anyhow, uh, Cindy worked hard on this, but this is basically to, uh, convert all of our, um, our lights to L E D. It's gonna be, uh, 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 costs twenty-seven thousand dollars and some change. Uh, it's gonna save us seven, seven thousand five hundred. Um, but then after rebate, you know, we, our, what's our final cost, what, seventeen? Thousand current invoice?
So, no, the, the D T E contribution is twenty-two hundred dollars, and the rebate's sixteen. The, the biggest savings was going from mercury vapor to L E D.
Yeah.
Um, and unfortunately, as you can see here, we only have one mercury vapor light. However, they have been billing us for about twenty of them for ever. Um, so they were surprised to find that we only had one, therefore, we've been paying for mercury vapor lights that we have not been actually utilizing. So in addition to this, um, they anticipate in August that we should see a credit on our D T E bill for about sixty-five hundred dollars.
Right.
So that is gonna be completely separate from this, this proposal alone will, will do a payback in just under three and a half years.
Yeah, basically.
For converting him over.
Three and a half years will, will, will be saving money, uh, by doing this.
So we're getting approximately a hundred and eleven lights?
Yes.
Yep, and, and I, I put thirty thousand in the budget to do this.
We're just under budget, aren't we?
Yep, so it, um.
Quite a bit under budget, really.
Yep, so it is a budget item. And, uh, you know, something that we were planning and hoping to do, so.
For five years.
Cindy, question here, um.
Email.
Where it says if the customer, if no.
That's why I said a problem.
If no, customer must sign below to acknowledge the lighting design does not meet I E S N A recommended. What's I E S N A mean?
Um, I'm not sure, but I don't believe that box is checked.
It is checked, no, no, it's checked.
It is checked, no.
I have the proposal printed, I didn't print out the whole thing.
The box.
Here, right here, right here.
Further down.
I, I believe, Joanne, that that's primarily if they're running off of poles that we already have that are existing, they're not installing a complete new pole and setup, they're just putting the arms on the poles that we already have, I believe.
They're swapping heads out.
Basically, yes.
Okay, 'cause I, just question, oh, nothing we can do about it, probably.
No, no, I, well, we could, if you wanna double up that amount down there, which.
Double?
I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
I think we might have to add a zero if we go replace all the poles.
Well, would, would we be open for any type of fine or anything like that, or inspection?
Uh.
If it's not in compliance with, uh, I E N S A?
I do not believe so.
What, D T E?
They're, they're gonna do it.
No, they wouldn't set us up for that.
I'm just wondering what that stands for.
Let's see if I can find it.
National Energy.
Recognition.
Savings.
I E S N A? Illuminating Engineering Society.
Louder, louder.
Um, trying to find the N A first. I E S is, oh, Illuminating Engineering Society of North America.
I was gonna say that.
Is what it stands for.
I really needed, I really needed to know that.
You don't wanna be so off, did you?
They must have some pretty high standards for, uh, L E D lighting.
Yeah.
Streetlights.
Well, I think it's.
Okay, we don't have to worry about them.
I think it's a win-win, where it's gonna save us money, it's gonna give her better lighting, and it's gonna, you know, save energy.
Updating our infrastructure.
That's right.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the D T E, um, proposal to replace just over a hundred of our overhead streetlights on the wooden poles, the upfront cost of twenty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Support. Okay, motion and support, any more discussion?
Can we expect the lights in front of our school to be replaced as well as part of this?
Yes.
That is.
That's been a, fricking, that was the first public, first comment I ever had when I served, sat on this board.
Is it?
Yep.
And honestly, Chris, that was the beginning driver of us trying to.
First one, that's spectacular.
Get a, uh, convergence.
We, we've had issues with communicating with D T E, like unbelievable, like emails. They, for some reason, they, they, they had our domain as blacklisted, so we could not email D T E, and it bounces back.
Wow.
And, uh, so, we'd have to do it through our personal emails, and this and that, but then they had lots of turnover, then COVID, and, yeah, it's been a, a challenge, but.
So we're also in the process of changing our domain for the Clay Township email over to a dot gov. So, that'll probably be rolling out in the next couple of weeks.
Yes, shorter, we got clay, T W P.
M I dot gov.
M I dot gov.
M I dot gov.
Great, okay.
Both will work, but.
The hosting is still the same?
Yeah. Changed the DNS, which I don't wanna get into.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and support, we do need to do a roll call.
Yep, roll call, please.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Crystal Reagan. Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Richard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Alright, next we have, um, and, and for all of these, I will, um, I will say that the, all these items are funded through the D D A, the, the D D A, um, basically was generous enough to give our fire department a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Woo! For re-outfitting, um, the new, put them towards the purchase of the new truck, and/or outfitting the new trucks as ever, however George saw fit.
That's awesome.
And so, all this is, uh, as a result of our, um, our D D A. So, big, big kudos to them. And, um.
Thank you.
First thing, we have, uh, fire department loose firefighting equipment, um, with a, with a grand total of sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and one dollars.
It's amazing that some of it hasn't, has been there since nineteen seventy-eight.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the fire department loose firefighting equipment for the new trucks for sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and one dollars.
Support. Okay, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Crystal Reagan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Richard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes. Okay, the next is, um, our ventilation, uh, saws, um, of forty-one, no, four thousand one hundred and eleven dollars.
Make a motion to approve the fire department ventilating saws, uh, steel ventilating saws for four thousand one hundred eleven dollars and ninety-five cents.
Support. And we got these from Zimmerman's, it's a local.
Yep, I'm glad to see that, yep.
Is that what they mean by the jaws of life?
Nope, nope, not these ones.
Is, uh, steel the recommended, uh, manufacturer?
What's that?
For something like that, the manufacturer.
Steel.
Steel, it's, it's a manufacturer, and they do make, uh, ventilation saws for the fire department.
Okay, good.
I love that brand.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Big fan, I got a old garage.
They're House Gaverna.
Yes.
That's my two.
I went, I went green on my edger and my blower, so just let you know.
Oh, you gotta charge your batteries.
I, I support that, I'm not sure the fire department would be able to get away with that.
Exactly.
Looks like we had a good savings on it, between the list price and the bid price, so.
Oh, yeah.
That's probably chief's work.
Yep.
Thank you, chief. Saving us money.
We get government pricing through, uh, Zimmerman's.
Great.
So. Alright, we have motion and support, right?
We do.
We do.
All in, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, motion carries. Okay, next we have, uh, fire department Scott V three twenty Fahrenheit thermal imaging cameras. Entertain a motion.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the fire department's request for the Scott V three twenty thermal imaging cameras.
Or.
One for each truck, I assume, right, chief?
Yes.
Coming from West Shore Fire.
From West Shore.
Yep.
What we do a lot of business with, they're actually the manufacturers, too, of our emergency sirens.
Out of capital.
Yes.
Oh, lady, say the number.
Oh.
Chris.
Uh, Joanne, can you help me out, I, I.
Capital Outlay.
Capital Outlay, two oh six dash zero zero zero.
Nine seven one.
Nine seven one.
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay.
I think they're all out of that one. Okay, we have motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, motion carries. And next we have our, I believe these are the jaws of life, that's what they.
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Genesis Rescue Tools, uh, forty-four thousand and twenty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. This is for one, or isn't it?
One set, yes.
Yes, okay, this is to replace our older one.
Make a motion to approve the Genesis Rescue Tools for forty-four thousand twenty-nine dollars and eighteen cents.
I'll support that.
Okay, motion and support, were we planning on probably trying to, to replace the other one in the next year or two, or?
I think we have it slated for next year's.
Next year, yeah, I just wanna let the board know. Um, so, and these are.
Some of the stuff that we purchased here, I think we have in this year's budget, which we will rule into uh, fund balance.
Right.
Right.
Chief's saying that some of the stuff we, we purchased this current year, um, which ends June thirtieth, uh, so that will give him a better, more of a fund balance in next year's budget. So.
Good.
It's all timing, you know?
Can we list the Capital Outlay number?
Two oh six nine seven one.
Nine seven one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We have motion and support, right?
We do.
Roll call, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Richard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Crystal Reagan?
Yes. Alright, now we have our general liability, um, renewal for our insurance, and, um, it, it actually went up more than I anticipated, but should've suspected it. Um, so I went back to our underwriter and said, come on, you know, we've been a pretty good customer, help us out. So, and I emailed you guys, and it's on the, uh.
Right.
Board, he, he gave us a further reduction of twenty-three hundred and twenty-two dollars, which ba- basically took the increase from nine percent to seven percent. And then we have, uh, and this is through Trident, uh, um, what, underwriting, is it?
No, it's the Argo Group, Trident does our.
Argo, okay.
They do our.
Yeah, it's underwritten by Trident.
Yeah. So anyhow, um, then we have the question, we've been, the last four or five years, getting a terrorist uh, rider.
Endorsement, yep.
Endorsement on our, um, insurance, and that's, uh, uh, one thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Cover us if there's any big terrorist event. And, uh, um, we have that option to, uh, not go with, so uh, with the savings that he, we just got, plus if we choose not to uh, get the terrorist rider, um, you know, it's gonna be about four thousand dollar savings, and it'll get us almost to where I anticipated we, we would be in the budget. Um.
Is there a breakdown in the terrorist?
Well, not really, it, it's, uh, it, it, if you, if you read the, the, the white sheet on it, it's only a half a page, and, and it, it will pay, it even says that if there's a terrorist event, a lot of times the federal government will come in and help local municipalities, and this insurance would actually not kick in until the government either denies us, uh.
Re-exhaust our limits.
And, and, right, and then it would, it would make us whole.
We have so much infrastructure that, you know, they could call a terrorist if they did something to our water, or, I mean.
I don't, I think eighteen hundred isn't, I wouldn't lose it, I, 'cause who knows what the, who the insurance company's gonna label it.
Well, that's the thing.
When something happens, so I, I don't think it's worth.
I, I could go either way, I, you know, ta- terror, they, they changed the, uh, definition of terror, now we have domestic terrorism and, and, and everything else, and.
I, I think the biggest contributor to our increase was, you know, the one point two million dollars trucks we just bought.
Well, no, that's what happened.
It was bound to happen.
No, our value, plus, you know, we have replacement costs and everything.
Right.
So, everybody knows this costs a lot more now to replace something.
For sure.
That gets damaged, so it's, uh,
They're extremely easy to work with.
Save the money, save the money.
So.
Yeah, but if they call, if we get something that happens, and then they wanna label it terrorist, and then we're not covered, we're gonna lose a lot more than eighteen hundred dollars.
Let's do this, let, let's do two motions, one more if, if the board chooses. Let's do a motion for the general liability policy, then we'll do a motion for the terrorist rider.
That's a good idea.
So I'll make that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the general liability, the amount of one hundred thirty-three thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars through Nickel and Saf.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any more discussion?
I, uh, I followed up on this a little bit, just so the board's aware, I, I know it's a seven percent increase, um, but it's somewhere between five and eight percent less than our competition in other municipalities and other, uh, entities that have to renew. The cost of insurance has skyrocketed, uh, for municipalities and commercially speaking, cost of insurance has skyrocketed for municipalities and commercially speaking, and I think Nickel and Saft is doing a pretty fair job for us to give us a seven percent. I mean, it seems like it's a little ouchy, but it's in, in relative terms speaking versus some of the other municipality groups. I think this is good coverage.
Well, we, we'll probably plan on shopping out next year, but I, I concur with Chris. Nickel and Saft is outstanding. Historically, we were paying about a hundred and twenty thousand a year. This is going back six, seven years ago, six years ago, and we had issues here. And our insurance spiked up, and so I went shopping, found Nickel and Saft, and they came in at about ninety-five thousand back then. And so now they, they're, they're just about caught up to where we should, we would have been five, six years ago. And I do also know of two other municipalities that were with M M L for their, their general liability, and they shopped it, and they both went to Nickel and Saft for the savings. So I know two entities that did shop it, and they ended up switching to Nickel and Saft. Because they called me, you're with Nickel and Saft, you know, how, how are they? Blah, blah, blah. And, and.
Well, they tell you to shop every five years anyways. People get the, you know, companies get hungry for business.
Right.
For sure. I love it, Mark.
But, yeah, we'll shop in next year for sure, but I, I can't complain. You know, they give us good service. You know, if we have a question, boom, they, if, if it's not the same day, it's the next day at the latest. And.
So the thing, the only thing I want to request is that on the second page line, on the two bullet point, I, I want to ask our agent for a benchmark. I want to know what other municipalities of our size and strength are paying on that.
Okay.
Okay, I'm a little, I'm just a little concerned about that number, and I want to make sure that, that we're in good standing compared to our, our peers, if you will. But that's not gonna hold up the motion today.
No. And we did, it was last year, we did, they, they appraised everything, our whole township, all our properties. They did a reappraisal on, on everything, and some of it jumped up a little bit and everything. Like, they looked at the Colony Tower, they looked at our buildings, and this and that, and this and that, so.
But, yeah, we can do that. Well, it's, yeah. We would just ask them to do it.
Right.
Moreover.
No, but I can ask them, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, so. Okay, we do have motion and support, right?
Now, this, this, this policy covers tangible, real property and tangible items?
Yes, and liability. Yep, it covers, someone gets hurt in our park, it covers our vehicles, our cars.
Even though, even though they're rental.
Vehicle insurance, though, right?
Yeah.
We have a separate policy for vehicle insurance.
No.
As far as driving and.
No.
That's all, it's all one.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, it's, it's a wide, you know, then there's umbrella for everything. It covers the pier, any liability there.
Saw the tower on there.
Yep. So.
It covers all the new, new items that we have coming into the township with, with the beach, the pier.
Yep, well, that beach isn't ours. That's the county.
Okay. Harson's Island.
Yep.
Nature Park.
And the new rental cars that the police are gonna get.
Yep. Okay. All right, roll call vote.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Now, let's talk about the question on our terrorism.
Well, I was reading that last page on that white paper. If I can find it.
Page sixty of sixty-four. It's page sixty.
Yep.
Said you should also know that the Terrorism Risk Assurance Act is amended contains a one hundred billion cap that limits U.S. government reimbursement as well as insured liability for losses resulted from certified acts of terrorism. So what exactly does that mean? Anybody know?
It'll pay up to a hundred billion dollars.
Yeah.
I know, before or after the insurance kicks in? I think we mentioned that once before.
After.
After. It, they, it, the insurance will kick.
My understanding.
Yeah.
What's that?
Yeah, my understanding is it's after.
The, the insurance will kick in after the federal government says, okay, you know, we'll give you a check for X amount of dollars.
They're saying, yeah.
So how, how, how long will we have to fight the, the U.S. government to obtain any financial?
Your question.
Before we switch to our insurance company.
Your question, that's, that would be for the suits to determine.
Well, I'm just making that as a point.
No, I hear you.
An act of terrorism is to be a violent act that is dangerous to human life, property, or infrastructure to have resulted in damage within the U.S. I mean, if something happens, who knows what they're gonna call it? Like malicious damage, it's covered on the other policy, or an act of terrorism. Who, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna make that call?
Right. Well, you know, I, I, I'm kind of weird.
Well, either way, Saft isn't gonna.
It's hilarious.
I'm kind of weird, you know, every once in a while I'll sit back, you know, okay, what kind of terrorism are, are we li, you know, could we do? I could see terrorists sink a freighter and shut the, the shipping down. And, I mean, this would be an ideal place to, to sink a freighter with a bomb or something, and the cutoff channel. And it would close shipping down for quite a long time. That would cause serious flooding for us, you know, and that would be a terrorist event.
Or, or I'll just say aqua contamination.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too.
Our water. Our water supply. I, I do think, though, if they wanted to, to attack a water supply, they'd probably pick a bigger one than ours. But we could be a test, you know, there, there's water supply. You know, they, or they dump something up in port here, and it gets like, you know, zaps all of us. It, it, it's, it's hard. I mean, there, there's a threat.
You really don't want to try and figure out what could happen.
I know. I, I, I just said, shut up, Artie. I don't want to give any, any, any ideas to anybody, but.
And the government, the federal government would be involved if something big like that happened.
Well, it would.
Yeah.
But I would say domestic terrorism is becoming more and more relevant.
Domestic terrorism now is more of a threat.
Do most municipalities carry this? Do we know?
You know what? It is about half.
Yeah, so it goes either way.
Yeah, it's about half. And, and like I said, I, I'm not gonna lose sleep either or I was just, you know, looking at ways to save money.
What does Saft say about it? Is it a good thing to get, or?
Well, he's a salesman.
Yeah, they're gonna have to tell you to take it.
Yeah, he, he's a salesman, but, you know, they, he, he's not gonna care either way if we get it or not. It's, you know, it, you know, he'll probably make ten bucks on it if we get it, you know. But.
Just seems like a small number in the whole scheme of.
Right, it's small. It's eighteen hundred bucks.
Thousand dollars, I don't know. I'll make a motion to approve the terrorist rider for the eighteen hundred and fourteen dollars.
I support.
Okay, motion and support. Let's do a roll call. I'm still not sure how.
Uh, Artie Bryson.
I knew, I knew she was gonna do it. I'm gonna say no.
You just make it work for me. Crystal Regan.
I'm, I'm gonna no.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard.
No.
Maureen Bory, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
No.
Oh, it fails, knows when.
No terrorist coverage.
All right.
Well, Maureen and I are gonna tell you so if something happens.
I know. You told us so. We'll take it.
I'm gonna save a little bit of money for township today.
Yep. Okay.
Take the serious outlook at that. We gotta start saving money.
All right, good meeting. Board member comments. Cindy Valentine.
Oh, I had a bunch of stuff, and now I don't remember what any of it was, so I'm good.
Crystal Regan.
Yeah, a couple things, Artie. One, with Javi Nunez coming up this Friday, everybody just, you know, just try your best to be careful, be responsible.
It's gonna be windy.
Get a designated driver, slow down, and for all of our residents, if you don't have to be on the roads Friday evening around here, then I'd encourage you to stay at home. Get your grill fired up, you know, have a beer at home. Spectacular.
I will warn everybody, there'll be a lot of state police driving our roads Friday.
Yes.
That's all I have, Artie.
Just putting it out there. Mark?
Yep, and for what I see on the road, the police are very prevalent, and they're doing a great job out there. Planning Commission update, there is a Planning Commission meeting, which is a public hearing for zoning. So that's on Wednesday at seven P M. here in this building. July second, according with all the other fireworks going on, the Lions Pickle Tournament is in full swing as far as development, and they will have their fireworks on July second.
On July second.
Which is Friday.
Yep. All right, very good. Maureen.
Have a safe Fourth of July, as well as the Javi Nunez, too, because we won't be meeting till after that, and.
Yep.
I'll be excited to see our new Pearl Beach fishing. Any sign?
Yes, me too.
Yeah, excited about that, and I'm gonna get to that park concession and check it out, so.
Okay. Joanne?
I'm just glad to see the, the hard work that Chief Rose is putting in, getting all of our fire equipment up to date, and, and, you know, making, making it the way it should be, and our new trucks. I give them kudos for that.
Yep, thank you. I would, I'd like to just say, we, it's been busy, like, like with the Fire Department. We've been planning these trucks for a couple of years, and we thought, okay, we need an airboat. And it's funny, it all just comes at once.
Yeah, right.
You know, we've planned it out for, you know, and it's like, oh my God, it's all here at once. But, you know, there's a lot of positive stuff going on. We're, we're doing a lot of work on our infrastructure and planning as far as, you know, both our sewer and water, and, and, you know, we're looking for opportunity to save, like our, our streetlights, you know? I mean, that's gonna save us money, you know, down the road.
It's seven grand a year.
Seven grand a year, you know? And, you know, I, I think right now our, our budget with the, the lights that we have is typically thirty thousand. So, so we're saving almost twenty percent.
Yep.
By, by making this change, plus, you know, better lights.
D T is probably gonna raise their prices, so.
Yeah, but, I mean, we just, you know, we got the, the County Beach Park, working on the Harson's Island Nature Park, and, and, you know, it's, the last two years has been challenging for this board because it was all high water and, and COVID, and, and we're afraid to really, we didn't have the time and the resources to get a lot of.
May I just say one thing? Cindy's been really, for years, working on these lights.
Oh, yeah.
Way back when she first got on the board.
Yeah, we've been tag teaming it.
Tagging it. So, thank you. I meant to mention that, too.
Yeah, it's awesome.
But there's just a lot of positive stuff going on in the community, and I, I'm very optimistic going forward, so. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, support.
All right, let's get out of here. Everyone have a safe week.